Oh, well, for all the new people who are here.
Oh, it's 9:00 AM now. Go ahead, finish.
There's a hush.
No, 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 no. No.
All over.
No. Good morning. It is now 9:00 AM, January 3rd, 2018. Let me call the city council meeting to order and let the record reflect that all city council members and officials are present. Please stand firstly for an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father above, Creator of the universe, we ask that you bless this assembly and its work, and those who appear before us to provide information vital to our citizens. We also ask thy blessings for those honored today with proclamations and presentations. Help us to be, to think, to act on what is right because it is right. Make us truthful, honest, and honorable in all things. Make us intellectually honest for the sake of right and honor without thought of reward to ourselves. Give us the ability to be charitable, forgiving, and patient with our fellow citizens. Help us to understand their motives, their shortcomings, even as you understand ours. For this we say, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We have a couple of exciting items this morning, the first of which is a proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, which I will present. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas Martin Luther King Jr. led the civil rights movement in the United States from the mid-1950s until his tragic death on April 4th, 1968. And whereas Dr. King combined social activism with religious faith, working tirelessly to protest injustice and to focus attention on the plight of the nation's poor. And whereas throughout his life, he advocated the use of nonviolent resistance in the tradition of Mahatma Gandhi to overcome oppression and to enhance human dignity. And whereas Dr. King's efforts led to the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the elimination of legalized racial segregation in the United States. And whereas among his many honors, Dr. King was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964, and the United States Congress voted to observe a national holiday in his honor on the 3rd Monday in January each year. Now therefore, the city council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida does hereby proclaim January 15th, 2018, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and announces that all are invited to participate in a parade honoring Dr. King organized by the Macedonia Human Services and Cultural Training Center, which will step off from the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center at 11:00 AM on Monday, January 15th, 2018, and end at the New Operation Cooper Street Recreation Center. Passed and duly adopted and regular session this 3rd day of January 2018, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting this morning is Reverend Haddock. You're welcome. I'd like to say a few words. Thank you.
Good morning. For the record, Reverend Ellison Haddock, accepting this proclamation from the City of Punta Gorda, we thank you, Mayor Kiesling and council members for supporting this effort. We thank you for all those who support this effort. As you know, we will be inviting all that will and can come to be a participant, not just observe, but be a participant in this celebration. Again, we thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have a special presentation that Howard will begin.
So, can you...okay if I speak from here?
Certainly.
So, we had a couple months process, and we involved folks from the resident neighborhoods, from the business sector, we had police staff, and one person rose to the top. And rose to the top not only in the interview panel that I and Shannon Doolittle conducted, but eight candidates, but rose to the top with the other panel members as well. And that's a good thing. So, we're here to introduce and swear in our new Police Chief of the City of Punta Gorda, Pamela Davis. Let's see if we still get claps like that here from...
Make sure we record all that.
So, this is the oath of office for Chief of Police. Let's raise our right hand. I, Pamela R. Davis.
I, Pamela R. Davis.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
The Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the Charter of the City of Punta Gorda.
And the Charter of the City of Punta Gorda.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
That I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith, loyalty, and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
All the duties of Chief of Police.
All the duties of Chief of Police.
For the City of Punta Gorda Police Department.
For the City of Punta Gorda Police Department.
On which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All yours.
All right.
And I'm a little shorter, so...Howard, you did tell me to keep it under three hours, but I'll keep it even less than that. So, first, Happy New Year, everyone, and good morning. Sorry about the weather. Shannon and I did not bring this cold weather here, even though she keeps telling me that. First, I want to thank the City Manager, Howard Cunic, for having the faith in my abilities and for selecting me for this position. It is truly, truly an honor to be your Chief of Police. I also want to say thank you to the city council members for being involved in the process and for reaching out to me and your support once I was selected. Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to all the members of the interview panels who gave their time for two full days through all the interview process. It shows a commitment that the community has in support of the Police Department, so I thank you for that. The panel members included lots of community members, business leaders, Police Department employees, and Ms. Shannon Doolittle, our Assistant State's Attorney for Charlotte County, and I appreciate it. I want to actually give a very special thank you to Jason Chishkini. Where are you? Right behind me. He stepped up and led the department through, you know, a very difficult time, and I think he did a really great job. He also has been extremely supportive and making this transition very smooth for me. So, I appreciate it, Jason. Thank you. And a big thank you to my husband of 24 years, Scott Davis. They have been extremely supportive through this whole entire process. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them, and you're the best family I could ever ask for. Thank you. So, I keep being asked, why Punta Gorda? What is it about Punta Gorda that made you want to come here? And I think I've shared this a lot, but my husband and I have been coming here for a couple of years now, and we came down because of the weather, although not this weather, but the weather, the location, and enjoyed being here. But we actually fell in love with the people here and the community. It just really, really feels like home to us. So, we did. We bought our house and decided we were going to make this our permanent home. The opportunity came up, this position came up, and the opportunity for me to continue my service, my dedication to public service, came available. And it's in a place that I love and in a community I already felt like I shared a connection with. So, that's why. Being a police officer, and there's many in the room, it's something that you do from the heart. You know, it's a feeling, and I bring that feeling here. I have over 26 years of law enforcement experience, and I think that's prepared me well for this job. And I will do the best, and I promise I will be the best chief I can be for this city. You know, it's been a tough year for law enforcement in general, particularly for Punta Gorda, and I've come up with a few plans to get us to move forward and get to that new chapter, and I'll talk about a little bit about them today. Top-to-bottom community policing philosophy that's going to center around procedural justice. So, it's going to be at every level, all the way through the whole entire department, giving officers that autonomy to go out and problem-solve with the community. I plan to establish a Chiefs Citizens Advisory Council and a Business Advisory Council so that we can address problems together, work together with the community, and we'll do this together. I am going to do a thorough review of all of our policies and procedures and our training programs at the department, make sure we're on par with national best practices in policing. I also plan to meet with every person in the department, every employee in the department. I want to gauge their thoughts, get their feedback on where they are now and where they want to be in the future. I think it's important that they share in moving forward. I also want to look at bringing new training to the department, things that are focusing on our communication skills, assessment, and tactics. It's something that I did up in Baltimore. It's been very successful, and it's something I'd like to bring here. Plan to improve communication from the department, as well as the visibility of the department, using our tools with social media. Where's Dylan? Dylan, I've already been...he was the first person I met with. So, we're going to try to get as much information as we can, share it, do a better job of sharing it through our social media outlets, things such as our public safety announcements, things that we're doing daily in the department, and even those things where I can recognize officers for the good that they're doing out in the community. So, that's one of the things we're going to do. Also, work at accentuating all the positives that are going on in the department and develop a better relationship or a more meaningful relationship with the media where we're sharing information back and forth. So, it's going to be a good positive relationship. Meet with all my law enforcement partners so we can open the lines of communication. Ms. Doolittle, we're going to be meeting and a lot of interaction with the State's Attorney's Office as well. So, basically, my plan is to be very transparent in everything we do to increase the trust in the community. So, my goals, I know there are many, but they can't be done alone, and I really hope that I have all of your support in moving this department forward. So, in closing, see, I told you I'd be quick. I again want to thank Howard for selecting me. I promise that I will not let you down. To the city council members and our wonderful community members, I will be accessible. I promise you that. The Police Department will be accessible, and we'll do everything to refocus the department on fighting crime, forging partnerships with the community to improve trust and providing the best possible customer service we can to the residents and the people who work and the people who visit the City of Punta Gorda. And finally, to my Punta Gorda Police Department family, I promise to be fair and consistent and someone who leads from the front. I'll be right there with you guys. I will value your input, experience, and institutional knowledge, and together we will restore Punta Gorda Police Department's reputation to greatness. I'm very proud to be a part of your team. Thank you.
All right. I need to sign this. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. And now she's got to go to work in a minute. Before we do that, we'll just take anybody who wants to introduce themselves for a border committee position. Now would be the time. Does anybody else want to introduce themselves? Please come behind Ms. Wright. Anybody else? Okay, we'll let them exit, and then... Okay.
Good morning again. My name is Colleen Wright, and I live in Punta Gorda Isles. I work as a CPA at Strang Olsen &amp; Lynch, actually right around the corner, right in downtown. Like many of you, the canals were one of the first things that I noticed about Punta Gorda when I was looking for a place to relocate it, and really, they attracted me to Punta Gorda. They're one of the great assets that we have here and make it such a great place to live, work, and play. Protecting the integrity of the canals and keeping the canals safe for all to enjoy is very important to me. The next several years will be challenging for any member of this committee. It's not business as usual. We are facing the recovery from a huge disaster. We must work together to repair the miles of seawalls damaged while continuing the normal maintenance. We also must develop new strategies for the canals and the seawalls to help protect them from the next big storm. I feel I'm up to that challenge and would like to represent the Punta Gorda residents and homeowners on this committee, and I respectfully ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to introduce themselves? Okay, seeing none, we will recess as the city council and shortly reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Good morning. Good morning. Happy New Year. Okay, we will call the CRA meeting to order. The first item of business is Citizens' Comments, CRA Agenda Items Only, which would be the Project Status Report, the approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 2017, appropriation of funds for parking, garage security camera system. That would be the items. Would anybody like to speak on those items? Now would be the time. Please take the podium over here, state your name. You have three minutes. Anybody like to speak on CRA Agenda Items? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the Project Status Report.
Howard Cunic, CRA Director. This is the monthly Marina activity, and compared to a year ago, the only major change is the difference between semi-annual and monthly rentals. We're out to bid for fixing up some of the docks that got damaged by Hurricane Irma, so these numbers eventually will go up once we can fill those slips. But the Marina's doing very well. And the pump-out vessel activity, pretty similar to a year ago. The Fresh Market Agrarpreneur Garden is coming to a close to a finish. We've got some concrete curbing, some walkways, and some paver sidewalks, irrigation. So, all this is coming to a close. We'll put in the final fill, and that should be up and running, hopefully soon. The new bicycle corral parking in front of Leroy's is up. We're waiting on the delineator posts so that we can take away the barricades. The solar panels, all that's left to do is the parking lot behind City Hall and Lashley Park, Bailey Brothers Park, Hector House Plaza. Those solar panels are up, and they're going to finish, they say before January 15th, but they should be done before. They're doing quite well. We have restrooms.
They're very nice.
They're very nice. I know they're temporary, but they will be there until we get the more permanent ones.
Good job, Howard.
Put one fire out anyway.
That was the number-one priority before Christmas. The playground redo is well underway. Equipment should be here third week in January. And the library, we are still de-watering, and we will, once that's done, we can then put the left, the fill that needs to get in there, and maybe, the county anticipates design and permitting 90% complete, so possibly March, April, we could see some work. We'll see.
So, they're giving you this date? The county is giving us this date?
So far.
So, is this something we want to let the community?
Yeah, we can let them know. I mean, so far, that's where we are.
Right. I mean, because it's a much-asked question.
Yes.
Much anticipated.
Yes.
People would be very happy to know that that's...
That's true.
Yeah, right now, that's what it's looking like.
You can state that it's right now as we know it, so...
That's it.
Questions for Howard? Okay, next item of business is approval of the minutes of December 2017.
Move the approved minutes?
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. And next, we have appropriation of funds for Harold Court Center Parking Garage Security Camera System.
This item was talked well over a year ago. We've had some issues of vandalism in the parking garage on occasion. Nothing really serious, but it's a nuisance between the elevators, the restrooms, and even some of the, in the garage space. So, we went out for bids. You see, we're recommending approval of the bid to put in security cameras so that we can, the next time something occurs, we can take a look at the videos and see who's doing it.
Yes.
Do we have any kind of a track record of when these things are occurring?
Yes.
I mean, is it directly related to festivals downtown, or is it randomly, or...
Oh, no, it's random.
Okay.
It's random.
And is there any kind of a legality for the city in putting in cameras in the garage? Because I understand that there are other locations that we can't legally put video cameras.
When this subject came up a while back, my suggestion based on some case law that I had seen back at that time was that assuming that the cameras are indeed monitored in some fashion, it's okay. The problem comes in when there's a false sense of security by putting fake cameras up and not doing anything about that.
Okay.
So, I presume that we're going to be doing more than putting fake cameras up, Howard? Yeah, so...
Real cameras. We're buying real cameras.
That was the concern from a legal perspective, you know, because you don't want to attract people with the false sense of security, and then unfortunately, something might happen. So, if we put them up there, then we need to monitor and make sure that we hopefully protect people from harm in unsecured areas.
Thank you.
I have a question. Who's going to be monitoring?
Well, we're not going to sit there and look at them 24 hours a day.
No.
But anytime there's an event, we will then take the videos and review them and act upon them. So, the tapes will be there, and that's how we'll handle it.
Yes.
Yeah, that was more, that is what is being done in Burnt Star Isles. It's the surveillance. It's not, it really isn't monitoring. It's really using them retrospectively so that people don't feel like they're being watched. And that, I think, was the important thing for the community, to feel like they weren't being watched in what they were doing, but it was a protection and helping in the case of an event, so...
Any other questions? We need a motion to approve the appropriation.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Citizens' comments on CRA. Anybody like to speak on the Community Redevelopment Agency? Now would be the time. Take the podium here. You have three minutes. Anybody like to speak on CRA Downtown Community Redevelopment Agency? Seeing none, we'll take Commissioner's comments. Gary.
Happy New Year, and I have to confess that I tried to convince Charlie that it was acceptable not to wear a tie. And he still wore a tie anyway, so Gary and Jahah, it's up to you.
I want to know if he's wearing socks.
Well, I tell you, my predecessors set the style for many years, always well-manicured and dressed, and I guess I'm going to follow in his footsteps. Just one thing, Howard, if, I understand, just going back to the restroom facilities at the park, my understanding is that this isn't just your normal porta-potty thing. These are tied into city services, sewer, water, electricity?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's not just a porta-potty with all extension, whatever. It's a high-class installation. Great.
Plus toilets.
Nothing else.
Okay. Jane?
I wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. I love this color. It's so pretty. It's very nice. I know. Okay, we are back as the city council now, and because we have no public hearings, quasi-judicial or second readings, that probably means the next meeting of January is going to be full of all of those things. So, moving on from there, we have consent agenda items, which would be the monthly litigation report and the MAC funding for a marine vessel. Would anybody like to speak on those two items? Would anybody like to speak on the consent agenda items, which includes the monthly litigation report and the appropriation of the MAC funds for a police marine vehicle, vessel, vessel? Okay, seeing none, does anybody want to pull either one of those things? No? Okay, we need a motion then.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we have the regular agenda. So, Citizens' Comments now will be on all of these topics. First, under budget, we have Tribune Woods Initiative Funding Prioritization List. Then, we have Schaefer Consulting, CHINEP Comp, Comprehensive Conservation and Management Plan. We have the budget reappropriations from '17 to '18. We have consideration of consolidation of planning, commission, and Board of Zoning Appeals. We have unified branding of cities' historic districts. We have CHINEP update, and then we have the Cooper Street item under Update of Activities Programs at New Operation Cooper Street. So, now would be the time, if you would like to speak on any of those items, take this podium over here for our convenience. Make sure you state your name, and you will have strict three minutes. strict three minutes. And you may form a line.
Good morning, Harvey Goldberg, City of Punta Gorda. Best of the New Year to everyone. I'm speaking on the consideration for the consolidation of the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. I think it's always worthwhile to consider and look at established processes, procedures, and organizations, just to validate that they are, in fact, appropriate for the time, or to make changes when changes are needed. So, I think it's worthwhile that be considered. In the case of this, of this consideration, however, I believe that maintaining the two separate boards as they are is prudent and effective for the city. When you look at change, you look at change for several reasons, or consolidation for some reason, for efficiency purposes or cost-effective purposes. And it's been discussed thoroughly through both of these board and plan and commission meetings, that there are no efficiencies really to be gained, or no effective and tangible costs to be reduced or accrued through these consolidations. This is not a matter of job preservation for the board members. I'm a present member of the Planning Commission, and it's not a matter of job preservation. It's a matter of what's effective and works best for the city. And I think it's been proven that this current organization structure is best for the city. It also allows for citizens to get involved with the city, to be a part of a plan, a commission, or a board, or in some way volunteer their time and efforts. And having two separate boards like this provides that opportunity, as it does for other, other boards and committees as well. So, I strongly encourage the city council to, I'm glad they evaluated this, and I'm, I strongly encourage the city council to continue with the course they're on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, my name is Reverend Ellison Haddock for the record. I'm Vice President of Institution Relations of Tribute Woods United Association, Inc., organized and registered with the state of Florida in 2015. I'm also the Assistant Pastor of First Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church and Chairman of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Day Parade and Rally. Who and what makes up a community? Before the formation of a recent Historic Homeowners Association, where the people who grew up, go to school, live, invest their time in serving and contributing to the Tribute Woods area a community? What were we called in 1962? "In God We Trust" is on this nation's currency, mentioned in the Pledge of Allegiance, and included in every state constitution of the United States. Local history bears record that from the formation of the first integrated church service of Tribute Punta Gorda, that churches and worship were important and a part of communities. A true community is comprised of individuals, families, or churches, businesses, and other profit, nonprofit organizations with interests in or service to that community. Individuals, families, businesses, churches, and organizations established long before 1962 came together for the educational, social, and recreational advancement of all of the community. Our present-appointed District One Representative has not informed publicly and only selective private homeowners of happenings, changes, or upcoming events that affects this district. Tribute Woods United Homeowners Association has disseminated all information shared with them by email, Big Tent, or the community board at Bailey Brothers Park and church announcements. We would have assisted him if he had asked to get the word out, as we were originally charged by this community. We pray that it was oversight and not disrespect or disloyalty to the interests and concerns of the citizens of the district he represents. In reference to changing the name of the Tribute Woods brand, there was a name change submitted a few years ago by some of the same people requesting this change because of the negative press of East Punta Gorda. Why the change back to a name including East? Is the city promoting the vision in what was explained to us as one city? We, as the voice of Tribute Woods community, do not agree with this name change, especially without input from all the ones it will affect. We suggest having a historic city with possibly colored flags or some other type of way to identify the Punta Gorda Historic District Overlay Map.
Thank you. Your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
No buzzer. There are lights down there, the buzzer's not working, but are the lights working? Were they working? Okay, thank you.
There's a light there.
That's okay.
I'll talk fast, I hope. I was asked to...
State your name for the record, ma'am.
Cussey Baker. And I've been very involved for most of my life with all these citizens from Punta Gorda, and they are part of Punta Gorda. And I've always thought of us as one community, one group, because we've always worked together. And in fact, when Punta Gorda started, there's a lot of you that don't know that Mr. Tribute, he did not allow people of color to own land, they could not buy land until 1999, and that had to come from Tallahassee. George Brown was smart enough to buy some land, and he bought it right away, and then three years later, he sold it to the county to build a courthouse. So, we, we've worked together for a long time, and Mr. Tribute left shortly. When he started Punta Gorda, he didn't stay but three years. His wife stayed here. She was, she got very ill, died, was buried with no tombstone or anything, or nobody claimed her. So, the city of Punta Gorda, when we did the centennial, they made a tomb, we made a tombstone for Virginia Tribute that's out in Indian Springs, and she is there, and he is buried next to Daniel Boone in Kentucky. And that seems a big difference to me. And the other thing I would like to say to you all, Punta Gorda's been first. We've been first with this community, with both communities, and we were the first city to integrate our schools in the state of Florida, and I'm so proud of that. We worked together as parents, and we had no press, no police, nothing. They just walked in that school, and there's two of them here today that happened to be the first students that walked in, Bertha and Isaac. Why don't you two stand up real quick? I'm real proud of them. They're a lot younger than me. We were so proud of them, and they gave up so much to do what they did. So, Punta Gorda's been a community of first, and I think it's a first, what we're doing, to put this community back together, where we are one community, we're not this, that, and the other. So, I would like to let you know that I support every one of you, but I'm not, I'm not for Tribute Woods. He needs to go back, he's in Kentucky.
I hope y'all can hear me, this is kind of low. My name is Darrell Gazdin, and I stand in, for someone else that could not be here. I read you the following on behalf of Reverend Dr. Carl Brooks, pastor of First Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church on Charlotte Avenue, where he's been there for over 38 years, and this is his comments. "I was extremely disturbed by a recent statement made at a meeting held at my church, where those in attendance were told that the only ones who had a voice in the Tribute Woods community are the homeowners who reside in the neighborhood. I interpreted that statement to imply that the churches, the businesses, not-for-profits, and property owners who have invested in the neighborhood do not have a voice. Those present at the meeting were myself, my secretary, my aide, District One City Councilman, New Operation Cooper Street, Inc., president, along with the board members via phone, the president and the executive director from Boys and Girls Club of Charlotte County, three officers from Tribute Woods United Association, and the former executive director of New Operations Cooper Street, Inc. I support Tribute Woods under Association, Inc. views of the united brand, branding of the city's historic district matter as representing my voice. The use of the word east to define an overlay area will still deplete a divide in the city. The true definition of one city would be properly defined if we label, or if we label, if we label the overlay as just City of Punta Gorda Historic District, and then select a flag or some other tool or method to define each historic zone similar to the color schematic used on historic overlay. Also, I am concerned that the entire Tribute Woods community was not made aware of the, of the renaming request. Thank you. I submit this document into the record as part of my unified branding of historic district agenda. Thank you."
Thank you.
For the record, Anna Callwood, President Tribute Woods United Association, Inc. I stand before you today in our role as the voice of the Tribute Woods community. Last week, our councilman informed us that we are not the voice of the community. He stated that the newly-formed Historic District Homeowners Association, of which he serves as president post-state record, is the voice of the community. He further informed us that New Operation Cooper Street Board of Directors does not have to report to anyone. So, at this time, I want to share with you the community's view as to why New Operation Cooper Street, Inc., better known as the REC, has the responsibility to keep the community as a whole engaged and informed as to community center happenings. You see, back during the time of segregation in Punta Gorda, Paul recorded city council meeting minutes of April 11, 1962. The city of Punta Gorda had a building designed and built for the colored folk. That building located at 650 Mary Street was named Colored Community Center and was given for use to the neighborhood. On behalf of the neighborhood, the right of use as a community and youth center was received by House Committee Bocati Haynes, Berlin, Bailey, and Clara Graham. To this day, the property, which was originally owned by the school board, is owned and maintained by the city of Punta Gorda, and we are so grateful. The day-to-day operation of the center was funded by the Charlotte County government. In April of 1992, the county government stepped in and removed the then-board and dissolved Operation Cooper Street, Inc., because they were not operating the center with the best interest of the community in mind. A new board was formed, and thus the beginning of New Operation Cooper Street, Inc., as the new manager of the community center. Ms. Bernice Russell was designated as president of the new board, charged with assuring the center would be operated in the best interest of the neighborhood and its community as a whole. To this day, the Punta Gorda lease still acknowledges that. I hope this clarifies the community's stance on this matter. What we ask of the city of Punta Gorda, the board of the REC, and our councilmen is respect, inclusion, and involvement in major decisions affecting the community and the neighborhood. Yes, we have a voice, and in the interest of the community and its community center, our voice will not be silent. The 55 years' right to use the building as a community and youth center with a manager on behalf of the community has been recognized until about five years ago. In closing, we had the pleasure of welcoming Boys and Girls Club of Charlotte County last night, and we look forward and are grateful to finally get in to meet our new chief of police, Ms. Pamela Davis. I thank you, and I would like to submit this script into the city record, and a copy will be filed with Charlotte County Clerk, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Happy New Year, everybody. I guess it's not a good morning. All right. For the record, my name is Arlene Gazdin, I'm at the other half of the Gazdin over there, and I read this following on behalf of Tribute Woods United Association, Inc. At a recently-held meeting, Boys and Girls Club of Charlotte County informed some Tribute Woods community leaders that the 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. ban that was submitted to the city on their behalf was not an everyday public park use restriction. He informed the leaders that their requested restriction would be put in place on weekdays, and when the afternoon program will oper, when, when afternoon school programs will be, it will operate on a full-day schedule due to a teacher in-service days and year-round school intercessions and summer camps. Please note that the community, community has not had a chance to be informed, nor given the opportunity to have a voice like they did for the current 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. park restriction that has been placed now for many years. Upon, upon a called meeting by Tribute Woods community, Tribute Woods United Association, Inc., will recommend that the community will approve, that their approval will be granted with one change to the restriction, instead of a 7:00 a.m. to a, to 7:00 p.m., that we recommend that a 7:00 a.m. to a 6:00 p.m. restriction be accepted. Thank you, and I would like to submit this document into the record. And on a personal note, since I got a little bit more time, I am, I've been in Charlotte County all my life, a long time. I have three beautiful children that I wrote, brought up in, in the community, and one served in the Army for six years, served our country, I'm very proud of her. One is in school now, and I have one that graduated from Bethune-Cookman University is with me, my baby boy is with me tonight, today, and, you know, I just say, as a parent, the time, I don't know, I'm pretty sure I got a lot of people here with me that could, will contest to family time. And I can remember sitting at the dinner table with my mom and having family time, and unfortunately, our children are being robbed of that. They don't know, they're on the, you know, those games and whatever, I don't even know half of the stuff. But I required my children to come home and sit down so that they will have memories. And right now, my children, my three children can sit down and tell you about family time, and I know all, I see the nods of their heads, and at this time, seven, the six o'clock to me is a time to tell the children, it's time to go home and be with your family. Sit down and talk about your day, and let mom know, if you had a rough day in school, that was the time we could talk about it. Get our kids tucked into bed. So, you know, I, I ask you to please consider this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year to everyone. For the record, my name is Isaac Thomas, Pastor Isaac Thomas, St. Mary's Presbyterian Baptist Church, and also a member of the Tribute Woods United Association. And I'm reading this on behalf of the United Tribute Woods Association, an input on the agenda item. We concur with the, the fiscal year allotment, and we thank you all so much. We have one thing that we, we, the way it was, the way it was read, we want to make sure that it was, the way it was told to us, which would be $5,000 for the Entrepreneur Fresh Market Garden, it would be $5,000 per year for three years, for the startup money and operation, and come to 15,000, and $15,000 to the Tribute Woods Community Center, the Cooper Street Center, which now will be, house Cooper Street and Boys and Girls Club. And initially fund to be allotted for public, public fund, the, talking about the $50,000 that we get, we would like that, the monies that is fund to be allotted for public service projects as selected by the community. selected by the community, and that the remaining funds be used for infrastructure, which I think that that's concur within all of everybody, infrastructure down in Tribune Woods area. So we submit this document, and we record it with this, with the agenda, Tribune Woods Initiative Funding Prioritized List. And I'd like to say that we thank you for giving us a chance, and some people that needs a second chance with the Fresh Market Garden. And we'll do all we can to make that work and be successful, and be an asset to this city. And I've been here for quite some time. I've been here with, and seen a lot of changes. And changes is inevitable, things are going to change, and we try to roll with it. But only thing that we are asking is that we get more respect as the pastors in the community and other leaders, that we are told the things that are happening within the city, and that we just don't hear it through the grapevine to a certain extent. And in my closing, I'd like to say that Tribune Woods, I don't even know how the name got there, but they say Tribune Woods, and that's what we said, Tribune Woods. I really don't know. I never knew how we got to be Tribune Woods. But, because we always called it the Cooper Street area. So, but anyway, we went there, but we've been, I'm going to sit down. We will.
I don't have my buzzer, so.
Okay, okay. But we'll, you know, whatever it's called, I'd just like that there is something that can say in this area that it's the historical Black community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning and Happy New Year. Kathy Getz, Punta Gorda Historic District. As co-chair, along with longtime resident Ms. Eunice Wiley, of just getting started, PGHDHOA, I would like to ask that you can please consider the name change of the overlay from Tribune Woods to Eastern Historic District. The request is based on the history of the founding of Punta Gorda, and has been documented through research of the county archives and other sources. You all have read Dr. Beretta's paper with the citations and references. The PGHDHOA is similar in nature to the PGICA and the other associations who advocate for their respective voting districts. We're requesting this change to Unitristic One with its three overlay districts, which can be confusing, all fall within the historic city of Punta Gorda, from Cooper Street to Fisherman's Village, and have numerous historic structures and sites. The reason to do this is to be consistent with the branding effort and to take advantage of the opportunity to promote historic Punta Gorda. Because this effort is now taking off, it is time to assure consistency in signing and message. Please consider approving this request for the name change. It has been approved unanimously by the HPB and is consistent with the Punta Gorda heritage and branding. That's number one. Number two, regarding the funding, the CRA funding, after being at two meetings, November and December, which were held at the Cooper Street REC Center, and talking to the residents who came to those meetings, the street lighting was their number-one priority there. We heard that in both of those meetings and through the staff here, that was prioritized. And so we're asking that the money be spent there, that the $15,000 be spent for that street lighting specifically in the area of the REC Center. And the rest of the funding be, go to the REC Center for the furnishings and the painting, which really needs to be done, and for scholarships for both the teen program and for the after-school program. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Braun, and I am here representing the South County, South Charlotte County Coalition, which is a organization of 13 different communities. Treble Woods happens to be one of those communities in good standing, and I've been asked to participate in the Treble Woods discussion. My biggest concern is, and what I'm seeing is a severe lack of communication between the two groups. And in 69 years of being on this rock, I've pretty much lived by the standard of the KISS principle, to just keep it simple, stupid. And if the two groups will sit down and talk and discuss, I would hate to see Treble Woods an entity that's been here for over 100 years be taken away. Because if you take away the words Treble Woods, you take away a lot of the history that goes along with it. And that history is part of Charlotte County as well, is part of Punta Gorda. And Punta Gorda should be proud of all of that. Now, I'm not going to take up the three minutes, but just, I would like to really see the two groups sit down together, and as an example of keeping it simple, stupid, there are signs that recognize PGI, there are signs that recognize burnt store aisles, there are signs that are here, there are signs that are there. I live in Charlotte Park 1, 2, and 3. I'm actually in Charlotte Park 3. We have signs that say, "Welcome to Charlotte Park." Why can't there be some simple signs that says, "Welcome to Treble Woods," and keep that alive? You know, no, I thank you for hearing me, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Eunice Moten Wiley, and I'm here standing because I am co-chairman of the newly-formed Historic District Owners Association. I'm glad to be here this morning. It's a good thing to know the history of Punta Gorda. And in knowing the history of Punta Gorda, it was determined that Tribune Wood, Tribune remained approximately three years, as was stated before. As you began to research, oh, just from different places, especially the newspaper, you would notice that Tribune was never used to identify Punta Gorda. It simply was a city of Punta Gorda. And people lived everywhere in Punta Gorda. There was no distinction. Blacks lived in this area. They lived on the riverfront. There was a place called Sharpie Town. And what we are trying to do is to eliminate what's beginning to be a big deal about a historic area, and it can simply be called that, because the history extends from Fisherman Village all the way to Cooper Street. And it simply says Historic District of Punta Gorda. We need to include Bethel AME Church. We need to include St. Mark. We may need to make note that at one time, there was a street called Cochran, which is now Martin Luther King. We need to look and see that we have a pocket park where once at a restaurant owned by a lady called Olamack. We want to expand who we are, not destroy. How can you know to cross over Cross Street 41 South and come on down and enjoy some of the things that are still offered there? We have a world-known museum, Blanchard House Museum. We have history to tell. We have a mural outside of Baker Academy. Let's continue to educate, and as we grow, because we're going to do that here in Punta Gorda, we don't want to be left behind. There was always a oneness. My mother-in-law is 93 years old. She's lived in Punta Gorda for 78 years. When I asked her, "What did they call it?" She said, "Always Punta Gorda. We're known as Punta Gorda." So let's be that. Let's get together, do what we have to do, take nothing from each other, expand, and just be the best that we can be. Thank you.
Thank you.